Yeah.
We.
And.
The whole time.
It's a sound of what?
That's why I don't mind.
It was part of it was not. You know, he goes, in this zone, and I'm like, yes. But if you slide this button, we can also. Now, we have someone sitting. Like, what's the deal? You know. So, right, I read some of my bills, and I watched that. That's one there. Unfortunately, I've got to. I have my son, right? It was, I. So, we're, we made a pact. I feel that well, too. I did. I want to have it. Fine. We're going to.
I do see.
That means no place.
We're going to. That's how I get. Look at him.
Is that right? No, that's the point. I told him, I said, look, just let's. I was saying, yes, sir. Well, I asked for some. They're watching there. Yeah. I get a light from her. She'll have to sit in there all day. Everything in my room. Perfectly.
Thank you. Four, five minutes. She had a little.
And. That was him.
You need to take care of the pets.
I'm about to eat down. Everyone? That's what he did.
I have two. But the others are not mine. These are not mine.
Jim. All right, Monday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. It is now six thirty. Time for the regular, well, special call, regular meeting, council meeting to begin. Please rise for the indication and pledge. Father Lord heaven. Hallelujah name. King come. Lord be done. Honor is this decision. Give us this day our daily favor. Forgive us our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. For he is not against us, but deliver us from evil. The dying is the kingdom in power and glory. In the name. But allegiance is life of the United States of America. And to the republic whose it stands, one nation and a God. In the business of liberty and justice for all. All right. Citizens' comments regarding agenda items. So, Mr. White. We're going to actually have a public hearing on the rezoning, so you want to speak then, correct?
If he's, if his comments regarding that, that would be appropriate.
Okay, all right. Uh, so we got no other comments? We need an approval of the agenda. Do I have a, a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make a, um, an amendment to it. And, um, to include the item that I requested to be added. I got it in by the deadline. And it was to discuss, um, the committees and the commissions where we have vacancies, for them to be, um, advertised. And also, and looking up on the website, that needs to be updated. I, I couldn't determine.
So, it's very, I'll tell you that the website's been updated.
The website's been updated.
Been updated. And, and as we've always said, now, this is not a working session. Everything on the agenda has to appear on a working session. Because if we don't, then we're out of compliance with Georgia Open Meetings Act. So, we can, we can certainly. And again, I don't think there's anything to vote on with what you want, because it's not a voting topic. It's a matter that we have openings on, uh, the HPC, which I think everybody's aware of.
Well, I. That was one thing that I noticed when I got my agenda didn't have the topic on it that I'd asked to be put on there to discuss.
Correct.
Advertiser vacancies.
Because, one, it's nothing we can vote on, sir.
It's not.
Again, there's nothing to vote on. Tonight is voting night. Tonight is a decision night. This is a council meeting. Uh, we certainly have a work session, but we really don't have anything that's quote, just discussion on the agenda for tonight.
The, well, I'd like to, to amend the agenda to add, um, discussion on the code section thirty-five dash one fifty-eight, which is regarding, uh, movie TV advertising and production company, use of city streets. And while I mention this, I wanted to, since I won't have any other opportunity to announce it, on Christmas Day, the filming of Color Purple will be in the theaters. And there'll be a lot of scenes where they film in Grantville. So, you know, you might want to, you know.
All right, do I have a motion on her first motion?
She, she made the motion.
The motion.
Okay, the motion, go ahead, a second. Hearing none, that will fail. Do I have a second?
Can I get a, a city attorney's opinion?
No, it fails. It fails. There's no second motion.
There's no second, so.
Okay, on her second item. Do I have a motion? Second motion. That one will fail as well. All right, thank you. All right, do I have an approval of the agenda? A, a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Approval of minutes, city council regular meeting minutes, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I have several amendments to the minutes, Mr. Mayor. And each one, on the minutes of October the twenty-third, I have ten, ten edits on those minutes.
Okay, well, they weren't presented back when we tabled this item. Uh, there was only one issue that was brought up, which has been reviewed, and the minutes were correct.
There's no way that these minutes can be correct. There's no way these minutes could be correct.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
There's ten, ten, ten items on here that need to, that need to be corrected. Citizens' comments where there's no topic, it's just a person's name and no topic of what they talk, what they said. Not even one or two words. And there's no mention of my motion, even though it lacked a second, where I was asking for, um, a legal opinion to go into closed session. That was no, nothing in the minutes. These minutes have nothing in it about anything that I said. And when I had questions that weren't answered, like making appointments when vacancies are not advertised, or awarding cash bonuses to volunteers, is this legal? Or opposed to cash bonuses to the city manager? And the issue regarding public hearing regarding the mileage rate was invalid. Minutes suggested that I voted no, with no comment of any discussion that was held, which should be, there should be something in the record.
I don't think.
And I voted no on the city manager salary increase. And the minute says I did not vote.
Which you did not.
And.
I never saw a vote for that.
And the agenda amended at the end with no motion to amend the agenda, where it's a city council report from the mayor only. No one else permitted to report, adding the status of the mail property and adding the resignation letter of Mr. White case. We set the agenda, we approve it, and then how do we go at the end of the meeting and start adding items onto it without approval of the council? I don't understand why.
All these items were on the work session.
Citizen comments, there's three citizens' comments at the end of this meeting, and no mention of the topic or anything that they said. The minutes are not signed, though those are my edits.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
October the twenty-third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay?
Opposed.
City council regular meeting minutes, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
I have edits for those minutes as well.
All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, am I permitted to get, to mention the edits that I have for these minutes that are going to be considered a permanent record, going into the record with, with errors on them?
Ms. Mayor, we're, we're trying to work through this agenda with the minutes, and, and.
I was told.
We have minutes the way they're done.
I was told that if I brought a list of what, what the corrections that I was suggesting, if I brought that forward, then they could be corrected.
Okay, but, but, so, I mean, your corrections are opinions, not always corrections. So, again, if there's something specific, like if you're marked that you didn't vote, and you believe you voted, that's something that could be, and we looked at that one from the twenty-third, and you did not vote.
I said I voted.
Well, you did not. It was reviewed by myself, it was reviewed on Ms. Higgins, it was reviewed.
I said I voted. What do you mean I didn't vote? I know what I did. I voted.
Okay. City council work session meeting is December the eleventh. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Gresham?
Yes, sir, just a minute, please. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we have two public hearings today.
Mr. Gresham, go pull up the microphone.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have two public hearings. The first one is to rezone the property located at one ninety-two, one ninety-four, and two sixteen Roger Arnold Road, further identified as parcels numbers G oh five zero zero eight zero one five, G zero five zero zero eight zero one six, and G zero five zero zero eight zero one six A, located on Roger Arnold Road from single-family residential R twenty to general condition, commercial G C. We will open the public hearing at six thirty-nine. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the rezoning, come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and the city council will receive your comment. Good evening.
Man, thank you. Um, I'll be repeating myself mostly. I don't, I don't really have anything new to add, but I just want to refresh you on.
Sir. May you. May I address?
Uh, Jim, Jim Salz, Fayette County residence. My business address in Grantville is fifty-four Church Street. Um, I just want to refresh what I want to do. I've, I've got, uh, these parcels here constitute, uh, over seven acres right on Roger Arnold Road. I own vast majority of the property around it. And I've sold the church where I have my office. And I own, uh, the entire block on Highway twenty-nine and at Lomout Road going over to Post Farm. Uh, and it's, you know, we've used it. It's been, it's been great, but Grantville is upgrading. Commercial business is coming. Um, there's, there's, the interest in the city that I expected twenty years ago is, has now started to happen in the last couple of years. So, uh, I really want to get off Highway twenty-nine. I don't need walk-in traffic. That is a very valuable piece of property on twenty-nine for business that needs traffic and walk-in. Uh, some, you know, like, like a fast food or something. I mean, we think of a hundred different things that, uh, that would be there. And I need a proper building. We've grown so much that it's time to build something that, that would be suitable. This, this land, except for one small house on the side, is vacant. And, uh, I want to build a sixty-by-one-hundred-and-fifty-foot building. The first thirty feet for my, for my office, we have four, four in the office on the phone, nine to five. I'm sorry, eight forty-five to five, Monday through Friday. And then behind that, I need storage. We don't manufacture anything. Uh, we're just mainly there in the morning or coming back during the day to get material. You know, Big M can only handle so much, and we've been their largest customer for probably twenty years. But we're constantly going for other things, to, uh, Home Depot, to Lowe's. Uh, and, and we, we waste a lot of valuable time, um, by not having proper storage. And so, that's what, that's what I'm looking for. I have a twenty-year record of not working after five, not working weekends. Those, I, my employees will all tell you, Mr. Salz considers those emergency times. And when we do have an emergency, which is less than once a month, it's never there. It's always at a house with a plumbing problem or something. So, it would be very unattractive, uh, and it would increase the value of the Roger Arnold area. This building would cost me at least a half million dollars. And then the goal is to, once I can build this building, then I can tear down everything on Highway twenty-nine. Of, I am already talking to some people, but I don't have anything other conversations. But if we clear that, um, the Highway twenty-nine, part of the problem with where the Dollar General or the Dollar, Dollar Store wanted to build was the slope, uh, and the lack of dirt. But the dirt is high on the first two-thirds of that lot. So, if I clear it, then I can, I can really level that out, and we can really put up something very valuable there. I won't do that, uh, because I don't, I don't build a suit, but I will clear it and sell it to somebody that has a plan. And, uh, it's the same thing we did with the church. We didn't just offer it to anybody that would buy it. Somebody had to have a proper plan that was going to help Grantville. Uh, and I won't speak for them, I think y'all already know, but. Anyway, I, I also have a history of looking after neighbors. The, uh, the name, the, the little dirt road beside this property, a tree, a tree fell over across it. And I don't, I don't own the two houses up the dirt road, but those folks couldn't spend the eleven hundred dollars to get that tree taken down and cut up. I did that at my expense and, and asked for no help from the others. When Wanda lived across the street, I now own that property. She's passed, but we put a roof on her house at no expense. And I intend to look after the people over there the same way, uh, as, as we can, uh, to be good neighbors. So, um, that, that is my plan. That will keep me in Grantville, that'll keep my business in Grantville, but I do have to construct a proper building. I've got about six more months of the church. And then I could move back to twenty-nine temporarily, but I'm hoping that, uh, if, if y'all agree to allow this, we can have everything ready in the next six months. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the rezoning? Seeing no one, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the rezoning?
I'm Robert White. I'm, uh, at two forty at Roger Arnold Road. I'm right beside property two sixteen. Nothing is a bad idea to rezone that, considering it's a residential area. We have kids, we have elders, you know, we have people walk the street. It's a quiet neighborhood. Bring a building, there's more traffic, more people, noise, et cetera, et cetera. And he was referring to the tree, that's his property. Been asking help for that road for numerous time, never gathered. Now, you want to come in and bring a building? I think it'd be a bad idea. He had numerous of property with that building in it, so. With that debris, heavy equipment, he tapped the road, you know? It's a quiet neighborhood, so. Uh, I wouldn't just bring a building over there and just stop a whole lot of problems, so. Like, I've been, I've been over there for twenty years, quiet, peaceful, nice neighbors. You know, I think it's over sixteen or twenty resident on that road. Quiet, never had a problem with anybody. Now, you want to bring out this noise and building? I, I don't think that'd be a good idea, but it can, you know, so. I mean, what if I, uh, what are we going to benefit from? I mean, he's going to have community? No. He, he's going to benefit from it, not us. So. I oppose that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing at six forty-eight.
Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next public hearing we have is to rezone parcel number G zero eight two two four seven zero one five, located on Clarence McCamry Road from R D Rural Development to general commercial G C. We will open that public hearing at six forty-eight. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the rezoning? If so, come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and the mayor and city council will receive your comments.
Hi, good evening. I'm Yolanda Hand. I live at one-two-two-eight J D Walton Road in Newton, Georgia. We currently reside our business at one hundred Clarence McCamry Road, along with James Hand and Mr. Robert Allen. Um, we would like to have it re-songed so that it can, because it's already adjacent with our property at one hundred Clarence McCamry. What we would like to do is clean it up. We want the frontage property just to clean it up. That's the first thing you see when you come to Grantville. So, we would like it when people get off that exit, they're going to see the lights. They're just going to see that we have business here, but it's a good wholesome place. We don't want any, we don't want to bring any additional traffic other than good business traffic. Um, I think that's our main goals. Um, we're already established, and it's been established since nineteen eighty-four. So, just furthering us along a little bit, um, I think would be a good, a good, it'd just be good business. Also, we do want to make sure we leave a boundary for the neighbors that are there. We do know there is some residential on that street as well, and we're going to make sure that we leave a nice boundary at the end of that road. We want to clean up that cul-de-sac, not to run business down that road, but we want to clean up the cul-de-sac just because people think it's okay to dump there, because it is a dark road. And so, we're bringing lights there to, so that'll stop and that we don't need all that in this area. And that's what we, that's what we plan on doing. Anything else?
Stay in value.
Yes.
And carry on.
Okay, thank you, guys.
So. So, I came before the city council many, many years ago, nineteen eighty-four.
Ninety-one, you're right, please.
Oh, Robert Allen, I thought everyone knew me, but I guess we didn't put it record, don't.
Formality.
Robert Allen. I live at, uh, eight sixty-five Mike Powers Road. But anyway, I came before the city council many years ago, and I had that piece of property resolved and placed my business there. I have two thousand feet of road frontage. And as you get older, you sometimes wonder, you know, what are you going to do with that? I didn't have any, any heirs. So, I met these wonderful people here that had, liked calling and that we enjoy heavy equipment and heavy trucks and all, and, uh. So, this property came available, and I encouraged them to go in and pursue it, because it's right on the fence of the interstate. Uh, with six lanes of interstate there, on the weekends, we have over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand vehicles from a Friday till Sunday evening. If you have never seen that many vehicles, go over there on a Sunday evening, watch them. It's just astounding. There really isn't any purpose for that. They had a road other than a commercial on that side of, uh, I guess it'd be the east side of Clarence McCamry Road. We've tried to keep it, um, low-key in that we don't have any, uh, anything going on. For the past few years, I didn't really do too much there. And then, like I say, I met this wonderful couple, and we decided we'd go into business together and, and, uh, expand the property. There's no, um, I guess, um, future development right now. We just want to have it zoned, uh, and present that to you.
Thank you.
Will you have a map? If you don't know where it is, we can bring that up and ship that to you.
We've already gone through that.
This is the fourth iteration of this.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the rezoning? Seeing no one, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the rezoning? If so, come forth to the podium and give your name and address, and the mayor and council will receive your comments. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing at six fifty-three. And like the city attorney said previously, we need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed.
Thank you. Now, the first item for decision on tonight's agenda is the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one to rezone parcel ID G zero five zero zero eight zero one six, G zero five zero zero eight zero one six A, and G zero five zero zero eight zero one five, located on Roger Arnold Road from R twenty, single-family residential to G C general commercial.
Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
I think we've discussed this thoroughly.
That is, like, um.
Anything else?
Um, approved by the, um, and it's gone correct.
Yes, it was approved out of pain zone. Anything else?
With a recommendation of yours.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed.
The next item for decision is on the second reading of ordinance number twenty-three, pardon me, number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two to rezone parcel ID G zero eight two two four seven zero one five, located on Clarence McCamry Road from R D Rural Development to G C general commercial. This also was approved, uh, the, pardon me, the planning commission recommended approval. They did not approve it. They recommended approval of this rezoning application.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item for decision is on the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, establishing a nighttime juvenile curfew.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item was, uh, is the tabled resolution twenty, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, establishing a city council policy for honoring and memorializing distinguished public servant council members. This was tabled for criteria, and unless the council and mayor decide otherwise, we will hold this until next year.
Do I have a motion to remove it from being tabled? Hearing none, it will remain tabled.
The next item for decision is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, establishing a city council policy for recognizing appointed volunteers in the service, in service, pardon me, in service to the city of Grantville. And as you see in your agenda package, the city attorney has revised the resolution and put the procedure within the resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that.
We'll, we gotta make a motion to amend the item itself.
A second.
Okay, now, Ms. Barry?
I'd like to make a motion to, to have this resolution, the format, be returned to, the signatures be on the end of the resolution. be returned to, the signatures be on the end of the resolution. When it was retyped, it took the signatures off, signature blocks off for the council members to sign. So I would, I would be, you know, approving the resolution with the proper format.
It is in the proper format. Council member Barry?
Mr. Greshaver, the resolution that I presented had the proper format with the signatures of the council members at the end of the resolution. When it was retyped, I guess it was retyped in the city attorney's office, the signatures were taken off of it. The signatures of the council members were taken off. That's what I'm making reference to. And of course, I'm in favor of the resolution because I'm the one that presented the resolution in the proper format. But when it was retyped, the signatures with, the signature blocks were taken off the end of the resolution, which is an easy fix.
That does not make it an improper format. The only signature required is the mayor's signature.
Does it matter if we all sign it or do you care? I mean, does it make a difference?
It's not my decision.
No, I'm saying, does it, let me ask, Mark. Does it matter if it changes from what the other resolutions are? I'm saying normally it's just the mayor. Does it make a difference?
Normally, just the mayor signs resolutions and ordinances and it was put into that format. If the entire council wants to sign it, that certainly doesn't affect it, uh, change its effectiveness in any way.
Okay.
Okay.
We can just approve it, put our signatures back on here and we'll sign it.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
I make a motion to approve the resolution, Mr. Mayor, with the signatures added.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you.
Good.
Uh, the next, uh, item, resolution number 23-30, approving and adopting a schedule of fees, of fines and fees for the Grantville Municipal Court, has not been finalized and it is withdrawn.
Okay.
The next item for your consideration is a decision to consider procedure to post all meeting notices, legal notices and city announcements in three public buildings in the city.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to remove this from the agenda until we get approval.
Staple it.
Yeah, until we get approval from the post office and from the, uh, the branch library, from the administrators there to approve us posting. So I'd like to make a motion to, to remove it.
So removing it from the agenda or are we tabling it?
We table it. Make a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Table it. Okay.
The next item, uh, Mr. Mayor, is a decision on appointment to fill the under-expired term of council post number four vacated by Alan Vacaser, which expires December the 31st, 2023, pardon me, 2025. We have three candidates. Their, um, application for the council seat are in your packet. They are Richard Marsh Jr., Mark Bynum and Joseph Bryon. I will pass out the ballots.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I see on the applications where the notes, there's a notation on the bottom by this, the city clerk's office that they have been cleared as being active registered voters. Was there a background check done on these applicants?
I don't.
Was there a background check?
I don't believe a background check is required.
It is not.
Well, there is a code section that says that they, in order to be qualified to be appointed, they should be registered voters, be a resident. They should not have been convicted or sentenced for any felony involving moral turpitude. And the only way you know that is if you get a background investigation.
I believe.
And that's, that's under the Constitution.
The only requirement is as long as you do not have a felony having to do with election law.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, please.
We don't do background checks on any, I mean, when, when people qualify to run for council, we don't do background checks. As a part of the application, they certify that they have not been convicted of anything and that is the process that's followed. Even if someone is qualifying for, uh, election to a city council post, we have never run background checks. And I'm not aware of any government agency that runs background checks on candidates for elected office.
Correct.
Well, they're cleared by the, uh, election official and it's up to the election official to, to make sure that the person is eligible to hold civil office. And there is a Georgia Code 45-2-1 that states what the person, in order to be eligible to hold any civil office, and it lists each one. And one of them is whether or not they're, you know, have, have, have been sentenced or any felony involving moral turpitude. So how would you know that if you didn't do a background investigation on the person? And that's usually done in the election official's office. They do check those things. I was just asking if it had been done. If, if.
This, uh.
If the city clerk had did that, chief verified that they're active registered voters. Now, you can register to vote and you can be a felon. You could register to vote. So the only way you can find if a person has any felony background is if you do a background check.
It's not required in this. Okay, dash your votes, please. Okay, do we have a new council person?
We do, sir.
Okay.
Joseph Bryon. If he's in the audience, would he come forward, please?
Raise your right hand. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Georgia, that I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Grantville, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member, which I am qualified to hold according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. I swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States or any other state or any foreign state which I am prohibited from holding by the laws of the state of Georgia. I swear or affirm that I have been a resident of the city of Grantville for the time required by the Constitution and the laws of this state for the election to the office of council member. Do you so swear?
Thank you. Mr. Bryon, sign up and you are officially on the council.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Come to take seat. Hey, Mr. Bryon, I will request that you remove your head vest. Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's it. We should read the announcements.
Uh, our holiday schedule is as follows. City Hall will be closed on Monday, December 25th, 2023, and Tuesday, December 26th, 2023, for the Christmas holidays. Additionally, the senior center will be closed Wednesday, December 27th through Friday, December 29th, 2023. And city hall will be closed on Monday, January 1st, 2024, which is the New Year, New Year's holiday. I would also like to mention that despite the rainy weather, we had a wonderful Christmas parade this past Saturday, which was organized by Shelley Smith, our supervisor of Parks Recreation and Special Events, assisted by the Grantville Police Department. And we thanked them for a great parade.
All right, Mr. Bryon.
Yes, Councilman, I live at 156 Arnold Street, Grantville. And I know several months ago, y'all were talking about putting a red light, 85, coming out of 85, uh, south, but right there at the bridge in Fraser. There's been a lot of serious wrecks and fatalities apparently. I was just wondering, has there been any update on when that might be coming?
So 29 and 85 are United States highways. We have no jurisdiction over that. That's the Georgia Department of Transportation. Upon my taking office, I sent them an email requesting traffic studies in February. It was turned down. They would not do it. I have since re-requested that after the last fatality that happened there. So we'll see.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, Ms. Barry.
Ms. Barry, 2003. Uh, I just have two things I want to say. One of them is these minutes, and I was not permitted to, to note corrections. You've got minutes here with the city manager making, making a motion. He cannot make any motions. And you have public hearings being held and no motion to open and close it. So these minutes are really, really need to be corrected. And the other thing is, the city is gonna be in a lot of trouble as far as this misinterpretation of Section 35158 about movies not being able to come and videotape the, the council, council meetings. Council meetings, it's a public and it can be videotaped. And to prevent people from coming into this council chambers or coming into this city hall and doing video, you can't do that by telling them. They have to get a permit and they have to abide by a, a code section that deals with movie productions on the street. And we're just getting the city in a lot of trouble using that kind of tactic to be sued and we're gonna go bankrupt. Thank you.
All right, seeing how the business of the evening is concluded, we adjourn.